Somebody watch.
We can be a little late to start this, since we don't know where Mr. Wall is at. Maybe once was here tonight. He was looking for ketchup for his burger, what he wants. I ask everyone, please, all electronic devices. Mayor Bello will be arriving a little late tonight. I think his plane is a little delayed, so.
We could delete me from the agenda tonight. We'll expect the car station location analysis. Want to make sure that we got it straight on that, and we'll just do that in our next work session.
That'll be coming back on then.
Fifteen, sixteen.
I was one. I was in the bar. I was in the bar. So fifteen.
At least you weren't very quick to like give it to them.
Thank you so much. We will keep it brief. And we will kind of tag team through these slides and just kind of do some highlights. Just to give an overview, the housing study, we were hired to look at. Gap, line housing. And take a look at the demographics and economics as well as the housing stuff. So it is not a plan, so to speak, but it is a kind of setting a baseline for what is here. demographics. For report, there's a lot of information in there. But essentially, there are. And that will keep going as far as people who move, movers. In the last year, this is census data, so I think this is 2023. So in the previous. And about six hundred moved into Burlington. Now, this does not take into account people who left Burlington. You're still looking at a lot of shifting for housing, so that is kind of a significant fact. The one that have a caution is that with wages for the employees that are. Getting up with inflation. That's probably not news to anybody, and that's not a problem that we're going to ask. So I'll share it once a minute. So when I talked about Burlington growing, this is a map where the shades are the dark. Is the area. Kind of look at the spread of how that is growing, and this is a percentage for a five-year growth. The purple dots are density. So you can kind of see the divide there where you have the density closer to downtown. This has a lot going on, but. The average salary. So you have your lower salary here, prepped and survey related, going up to your highest. Thickness is how many. That group in the city. And the colors, the blue are ones that are growing over the last five years. And the oranges and reds have job losses. So when you look at the division, you have. And there are a lot of. And it has average, a high average salary. And then you kind of have some mid-level here with sales, office admin, transportation, a lot of the warehousing jobs. You also. So you can kind of set the scene for what we'll be talking about in affordability. And we'll. Housing affordability in groups.
This was an interesting exercise because we. Went back and looked at our original categories we've been using for years. The first group, which is your old income housing. Basically, this is defined. Very low and that. It's a under thirty percent of the average income. And we're talking about sort of really, really bottom level of earners. So affordable housing. These. Have substance. So if you're trying to house people in. Frankly, this, these headquarters don't pay enough money to pay the minimum rent that you would have to charge. Don't like those first time home buyers, people just starting out. This is. Doing. Because there's not a lot being offered in their price ranges. Which is basically your ability to sort in this category. It's a. Collection of housing. A group of houses where people's incomes are lower than if they came through their fourth housing. Then you have people whose. Are, but even stay there, who don't have a lot of choice. And then you have the market, which is what we normally think of these subdivisions or the older subdivision. Reams or modeling, so that should be an idea. Have. Lot of issues in Burlington. You have. More. You have. Other companies afford the average house being built or the average rent being charged. We talked about house part. And you're. Is they should not be paying more to thirty percent of their gross income. For housing, for gross housing costs. Thirty percent of their income needs to cover housing and utilities. Some transportation cost, get back and forth. It's often from him, and so he. That's a no for someone making, if you look at those bottom lines, you have healthcare professionals like thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. But they go forward thirty percent of the thirty-eight thousand. That's generally not going to be enough to get. We put the most common measurement in the study. We will be with the planning department to. Yeah, forty-six, twenty-three percent. Most people can afford.
The, just a quick note, the chart down. When you get a high percent, that's the yellow. There's a lot of folks that are stretching a lot further than that thirty percent.
And the. Again, that gets back. How is this? An interesting visual of.
Look at the different income levels and the number of households that are in there compared to what is the. And those prices, what was available when we kind of surveyed of what is available to buy and to rent. So you can see at the top, it is even, and then you kind of have some working going on. And so. The strength of the availability of product that's available. And then again, the. Is off kilter as well. Now, it comes closer to. About things in here. Have. Markets below that are stretching that dollar and then also taking some of that inventory. So. Lot going on here and. But I always love a good visual, so I think this kind of helps illustrate that a little bit. Another visual. Thousand a year average rate, nursing assistant, elementary teacher, police officer, and Andy keeps going on up. So you can kind of see the people that will have jobs and great service jobs that are following in those income areas. How many housing units, the census data, and then also took a look at the tax parcel data. So you have two different ways to look at it, two different time periods. Patients, so to speak. About fifty-six percent of living owner occupied being in owner occupied. There was a seven point two percent growth in housing units in five years. Meaning. By housing units to the census is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Now that is valued. There were, when we looked at the tax parcel data, eighty-eight percent of the tax parcels that were identified as residential with a housing unit or multifamily on there. Overall, the city has seventy-three hundred and forty-four apartments. This is an apartment complex is a bigger, larger scale development that has, I think, five.
In terms of the number of those.
Pardon?
Indicate a seven thousand four apartment. Your single family homes in the city.
So overall, as far as units, there are twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty-three. And so that includes what. And so that, and so when I looked at the housing or the tax parcels, eighty-eight percent were single family detached. So that's. We also looked at the availability. We blended sources. And what's available for rent. When we did, and it was the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, two hundred and forty-two single and multi. Homes for sale, that would be condos, single family attached and detached. There were two hundred and eighty-six. For rent in that same time period. The average sale price for. Is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And compare that to what. And that is, there are a lot of charts in the report that break down. Things here. For the housings for, houses for sale was about forty. I think people are always more optimistic with the listings. So when we get down to the two seventy-nine, the average sale, you can kind of see the difference in that. Then the average square is about two thousand square feet.
I have a question. So HUD's A in my percentage is eighty percent or below, correct? So that would mean on the. Thank you. And sorry.
Well, for some sort of, not necessarily traditional HUD programs. Households, I believe, are twenty twenty-three. I'll have to double check that.
Cause I double checked, and I think HUD as of current point five is eighty-eight thousand.
Yes, we kind of spanned some timeframes of researching this and putting this together, so we were in twenty twenty-four. Does. We are. Simplify of that. And so not, not necessarily every household in the affordable, you know, people person. So there's a lot of variable, and the chart, the visual is, is a simplified.
In that gray section. Income earning. Thousand per year. That. Thousand dollars. That a family of six could still qualify for HUD.
Yeah.
Because they have six in the household, let's say a father, a mother, four children.
To be eligible for physical housing, like public housing, housing vouchers. Income is sixty percent. Of the median. And then that is right on your family side, so this is a single question to a family of six or seven or more. And a lot of bigger families. The sixty to eighty percent of getting income, you are, that is where you get eligibility for. Other substances like. So you get. Through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for various mortgage assistance programs. Income is going to be higher to get in than, say, a family of four. And. And
Absolutely. I think I researched over the weekend. I think I found the 2025 table. That I made sure, if you don't mind, I see them.
The court that I haven't requested, but the Housing Authority every year has to prepare a, the court of their housing A law Much more refined than we did. But if I pull that, I'll share probably.
Thank you, sir.
Will you send that to all of us?
Earlier statement, percent of homes in the city qualified for HUD. Is that correct?
Well, a lot of rates depending on who's in the household.
I think it's more 50% would be under that 80% threshold, A and Y. So when you put the dark blue and the middle blue together, that's where you get that 50%, 150% based on 80%. 30% would actually be extremely low. So it's no middle, because HUD actually has a middle, right? They have the extremely low, the low, and then the blue. But on this graph, that was
Income. Help me with that. That's the one that I had a question last week. What does, you know, of, I mean, cost of product itself compared to what the individual or family makes in terms of salaries? Is that, if those two figures numbers go in together or in terms of rent or mortgage payments or whatever?
Straightforward look and say, how many households are earning this one above, taking the HUD, just kind of do it from there. And then Middle income, they have earning up to 93. So Costs would be 286,000. That's kind of the, the range, so to speak, on that. And then for monthly rental affordability is 23,000. Kind of group them and organize it from the visual, but to be able to analyze and take a look at it.
I think, yeah, I think we're trying to figure out, you know, at 77, well, $78,000 a year income. I'm the, I don't know what teachers make now, but I would think two teachers in
So an elementary teacher, this, and I think this is 2024, is 54,000. And they're not going to So that's the average for all of that occupation in the city of Portland.
Does this chart take in or how does it Teacher, no spouse, no children at home, at 54,000. A family, if you've got two, two elementary teachers at 100,000 dollars a year. How does that represent to potential housing, say, that four?
Yeah. Actually, the market rate actually just over, because I think that is I gotta send that. But then, when you start putting other costs into it, how
The general rule of thumb is that you have 30% of your income to spend on housing, is the general rule. And so if you take that 30% and dice it down for your Those sort of things. And all of that adds up and should So you know, this paycheck to paycheck type of lifestyle. So But it would be able to afford in a flat price, that's going to be near the 195, it's up there.
Percentage of that would be Okay. The housing cost, and again, we say housing cost, that's not money. Clothes or food, that's cars, none of that.
That is your house, your mortgage, your insurance, and your utilities.
The utility I really, I'm trying to figure if we can get this across to the citizens in a simple way, what people can understand.
The cost to do taxes, for example.
Yeah. So if you have the two teachers that are in the light green area
300,000 dollars. But then that sort of fills them off filter, their other bills. I mean, the real story is that you have You were housing and you're really supplying, does not really, the income groups that people really need it.
Yes. How much impact is So, look about it a few, four and a half, five years ago. It's, it's a vastly different landscape.
It is.
Just based on mortgage rate, the acceleration of mortgage rates exponentially impacted that number potentially 70%.
I would agree.
Exactly. A little bit of where it's going on.
Yeah, what I read is like 6.64% is what a lot of the studies out there have. And, you know, if you go back five years ago, it was not uncommon to be to the Great Order Spring.
I used to know the answer to this, but for every And we can, we can look at that for you if you'd like us to.
Well, I guess the 35% rate. And then that doubled. And that doubling along with the inflationary aspect in the second quarter of 21. The whole monetary policy, that, that is in and of
And, you know, if you look at it, that's something which you can't, very little control. That under is important.
This is how the months for purchase by color code. And the red sixty thousand dollars. The orange squares, which are kind of concentrated up, up in this area here are the next group. It's 185 and under. And then your green, kind of your middle market at And under, your blue, 48. And then your purple upscale, which is even upwards towards the 700s. So you can definitely see, you know, these are working together. Oh, as of March first quarter 2025. We did kind of a point in time where we took out anything that was not yet built. And that's kind of been a different chart in the
And the blue, under affordable. But to only have 12% of homes available for purchase. And then for those that were in the dark blue, under low income 3% is what we're saying. That group can only afford 525 dollars a month. I think a storage building is going to cost you more than that.
Yeah. So I mean, otherwise, it's a family, you know, or anyone subsequent.
Something that, you know, this is just from Burlington, if you still do, which you are in housing, whether they're heirs or whether they got a good that, that you have time meeting your needs and what you can get. You're lucky enough to get a substantive help. They just don't fly having money. If they're living there in the middle of the summer and they don't have an air industry or in the middle of the winter, they don't have heat. Times are watching, cut off. The stores back there are ruthlessly They endure And that's very common. 30 to 50 will go from the zero to 50%. That's the other thing, is that wages, a lot of places have, have cost housing. And this That affects both rental housing and the single family housing. Because the family housing requires that your income be higher through the cost of life, to pay the mortgage. The housing is developing or is having to pay more for his or her mortgage. This is a very, this is kind of a very complex system. It is a combination of which Such important
So there's a product It's a, it's a person Multiple homes Which is Negotiate the cost of that particular home. And obviously then, if they don't use this for rental homes, that means the, the, the cost of rental is going Okay. So how does all that play into that? Because I think, maybe I'm wrong, but I believe there's a number of units in this town that's, we've got some people that have a significant company. That play into this?
So when rentals are available, they're single family detached home. So we can look at that and to factor that in. That's another product on the rental side for households.
Yeah. And just sort of the I went to that house price and I figured out what I'm going to have to borrow. Including myself, the equity, and that's going to be about one third of the rent. And operating costs and sorts of things. But And you get that return, you got to break it into I will tell you, in 50 years I've been in this, it's not necessarily that savvy myself. I've known a number of landlords. And that's kind house, with code repairs required or not. And I then rent it for it. And they'll give that going to meet my cost of capital, my
As a family, you know, if somebody is buying them up and still renting them out. Households, so to speak.
Well, the chart That impact is turnover, this can be Real income. That's got to play into
But, you know, one of the important things that we point out in the study is affordable housing. And it's, that's a focus you should have when you naturally occurring, these houses that are rent. And people buy them up
I'll tell you, uh, uh, in fifty years I've been in this, it's not necessarily that savvy myself. I've known a number of landlords and that's kind. House. With code repairs required or not and. And then rent it for and they'll give that going to meet my cost of capital, uh, my.
As family, you know, if somebody's buying them up and still renting them out. Households, so to speak.
Well, the. The impact. Just turnover, this can be. Your rental income. That's got to play into.
But, uh. You know, one of the important things that we point out in the study is. Affordable housing. And it's, that's a focus you should have. This naturally occurring. These houses that are. And people buy them up. They, this, this, where they're living. And so you can encourage that in. Naturally. The past. Home. You. We have owner occupied, uh, naturally occurring. So. We. We have a council member in, in Graceport who, uh. First. They. What do a mom and dad. Being in Indianapolis, New York or San Francisco. And your. Or. Do. Just. Board. Or do you try to sell it? That's an interesting way. And also you have. You have a lot. Of choices. So. The title. And. It's. Lama is living in that house for daddy golf. And you had four brothers and sisters. And then each had three kids. Number bust out of war now, but in order to keep to. Clean title. Anything. Just. Help. But I would say just from, sort of by basic, uh. We were, we were not hired to do programs, but we did like to figure out the lessons on where we. And who the hell.
That was national occurring.
Natural.
National recurring.
From bank regulation. So someone that does not have cash for down payment, they may have revenue. They don't have PMI. Which further eliminated. They get the aspirants that maybe that thirty percent is what banks are going to use as a guide. And they don't have encumbered with that regulatory aspect that a bank has to use. And then there's the whole, uh, credit skill. Being. Myco, TransUnion, Equifax, what is? It just puts, it puts that inventory into play for people that could not. Despite. Revenue. On the credit of the day.
Ten minutes or proof of that. It's not just one thing, it's a number of things.
And that's. For like the land trust. Because I know that for one is going to build generational wealth when, um. House. Helps them get their credit together, right? And for the fact that they're going to be at that amount, I think twenty eight, thirty percent. As far as their income, so they're guaranteed to be able to live there when they're. Matching.
At times for subsidies can come in. Program. Area. He was operated for New Orleans. And that is because they have a lot of. When you pick up trucks. You're actually. Because they tackle. So. There's been a lot of. It's so. Those. And they use the mortgage, it's not like. They. They put it. And we have the cost of buying. A year, but that is twenty five years a year you didn't have before. And this is sort of. Okay. I've had a worked, you know, land trust.
I think the rates, you know, like what's concerning me is a rate at seven percent. We double. And we wouldn't be able to afford it, you know? Just a home that's at, let's say. Hundred eighty seven and it's going to be a separate. Right now.
Where is the thing? It's like a. Going to take the land cost out. That brings the price down. And I don't want to talk a little bit about the interest rate. You can provide. That's. If I. You're sitting on it for twenty years. But you're. In the chips. And we don't control the, uh, federal reserves interest rates.
Pretty specific. Of individuals buying a, a free, three bedroom home. Her may live there, but then that person rents out.
I think. I. How it came out in the census, but, um, I think it was. Whether somebody decides to rent to somebody else. Or who you rent to or who you don't. Um, I think that probably does another way to bridge the gap is between your interest. Just that individual would have to make on their own.
Uh, we had a really. Uh, entry level housing increase per the. And Anderson. And one of her hallmarks. She set it down with her customers who couldn't afford her house. Not an. Considerers. They consider the income of everybody living in the house. And. She did a really good, really good job of that because she helped individuals figure out how. Complex.
But actually. Again, that is looking at. We're all kind of nationally and that multi-generational living is a trend that is going. One is affordability and kids that can't, you know, I've got two kids and they can't buy a house right now. They have decent jobs. So. We don't. Some interesting. Of, of people doing things and then people not leaving their houses, uh, because they got that, you know, three percent. Discussion. So I'm. Here we looked at the pipeline, so to speak. When we looked at it, which was the beginning of 2025, well, actually 24, then we updated it first quarter 25. There were about. Permitted, but there were only 558. Were marked. That could change. Um, that seems like a very good amount, but what's at the end there and, you know, five hundred and fifty in. There might be some mortgage rates, you know, affecting that or some other costs as well. The edges there on the north and to the west. But we'll get to kind of. Looking at how things are right now and the numbers that we have and what. Are going like the house. And people are moving in, what that's going to look like. The average. The house sold, um, as it is now and what that current supply and that things that are under construction right now. Which brings us to a gap of almost five hundred. Kind of very simplify it and get that, that point across with how they are right now. But my next slide. I'm going to jump into what. And hiring more people. Uh, there's also been. The map on it. The. Drive time. Speed cut to the edge here. You have food. And. And down close. Uh, and so we did look at. Expect. migrate into the area. Those projects. And this is the example, I have a couple. So thirteen thousand. That are. That being sold, you know, it's a long-term process, but that's thirteen. Into the. For those projects and that would be about seven. And we see. Seven hundred rental units. Um, and then it divides up. Eight hundred, two, nine hundred dollars a month. Um, most are a thousand or more. But again, that's not the. What could be coming for this area. So thank you so much. I don't know. I, I jumped to that last part very. Said to me. Questions. Um, and thank you very much for the opportunity to work on this.
Thank you.
But, um. Look, I told him the bread and he just. All right. Thank you guys. So we'll. About the main board, our, our little program today.
And the. Update on stormwater response, um, to Trump's storm in Chantau. Um, I know that you've. Some update. Department of Public Works, um, and Water Resources did in response to Chantau. Also an idea that. You see. The process. That it gets worse with, got worse with Chantau. Just to remind everybody what. We get mixed up. And it works, um, in engineering and, um. And that is the, the goal and primary function. Generally. But on top of that, we. Process. And, um, it's a very large. Also. As well. So rest. Um, you've seen a lot of different. Um, I tried to. As much. But. One, this was one gauge. That read. Inches. We had a gauge that read over ten inches. We had a gauge that read over seven inches. So we had a, a lot of variation around the city. Um, but that five point. To. July. Is less than five inches on a typical year, typical wet year. However, the average is less than five inches. Storm. You know, three inches in fifty minutes or so. Um. July siege. Between probably like five inch. This is from a couple of stormwater divisions gauges. Uh, this is Brown Ridge. So this is located at the. This is shows you the two bursts of rain. Deep in it. Each of this is over by Key Street where we do have some flooding issues. Very significant. The type, uh, what did we do? So what did we do in response to Chantau? So between engineering. The type, what did we do? So what did we do in response to Chantal? So between engineering works and water resources, we would respond to the comments between to that way we can go back and form a game. A lot of issues we're seeing problem is not necessarily focused on that project. We really need to like, let's brainstorm of what had one particular to those concerns. We CCTV'd, so we can read the stormwater. Any stormwater life have roots in we provided technical assistance. So if we can't find that property through the cost share program, revise some this is what here the stormwater pipes and something we're still dealing with. So some streams, please, we can. And when I say I don't be cutting down the buffer, I'm sure you could have guessed. Those trees have been out from getting a that I could easily get from see click fix from voicemails. But this is these numbers. I do, we do not reflect the amount of calls that we got and we over and again, I would say is probably closer to 100 if each but when it was here, but it's, we didn't have a huge amount of rain like we did with Chantal. So we had a huge jump in demand. And the types of calls that we see today, not just with Chantal, but in particular, what we saw was flooding in and out of the floodplain. So we often see on a daily basis, we see flooding in the floodplain. That's to be expected to certain you know, hotspot flooding around the, around the city and where areas. What can we do? This are always arriving. It's not something you can stop. It's just something you can slow down. Fences falling in. We have this very close it is some severe bridge clearing and public clearing. These are all the types of calls that we're still responding to today. This is just an idea of, again, this just reflects now to some areas, they're very focused, the calls that we responded to. But we responded to calls all around the city with Chantal. It wasn't just, you know, one particular just to give you some project estimate. But just to give you an idea of what a project would cause. One Chandler Avenue, we have severe flooding and I can show you the video. Severe flooding there even in a regular storm and in the you could do something on city property because we actually own a bank at a large water device to actually take, take away some of that flooding. So the fix would be to increase sizes of culverts downstream. So 807,9100 significant project. Stormwater pipes going under houses. And we have when they separated, they got also water was flowing along the pipe, the pipe and sort of in the pipe and pushed it up. So now it's exposed and there's a big hole in the yard. Was actually just for the study for project management, for permitting and doing a flood study because that is a FEMA stream right there, but that cover is failing on in side avenue. These are all areas that have been focal point for similar to what we're doing. We have it on our list to get a watch and study.
Amy, I'm sorry. At this moment, we Beaumont. We've seen the video. Almost half.
It's crispy.
Crispy. Yeah. We don't actually know yet as to
We have a really yeah, there, I mean, there's definitely bottlenecking and backing up going on at Beaumont. But there's also some, some with the stream. One tributary we bit to Beaumont have backup into it. Actually, a property is flooding and getting into livable space right there because it's that stream can't get into the main stem when that So we have a really good idea with what's going on with these, but it's more of what would it take to, is it feasible? You know, how and I do want, I do want to say that with a storm like Chantal, there's no amount of pipe upgrades that we could have done to alleviate that. That was only an inch, a one inch rain event in March of 2025 and their wholeness. And, you know, this is, I know respective actual homeowner, you know, I thought it was very interesting to see that this and this is what
Where is this?
This one is Do you from them from
And it's just their house because the neighbor's house is fine, right?
And this is the property where we actually own a lot next to them. But again, the study to see if we could do a lot there and there's just no, there's just not enough space to get a basin or to get a hole down the water.
So responsible for that damage that it causes, it has to be some damage that come around, you know?
I took data in a 20 cost share. But just to give you an idea of is unaffordable for most people, you know? So that's just And this is one of these projects where they're receiving, they have issues both upstream and downstream. Have a tremendous them already. It's actually a stream area, still trying to flow through that area. And then you have culverts downstream from the property as well, causing some bottlenecks and backups. So they have, they're getting it really from both sides. It's just
Thank you for sharing.
If there's any questions, please let me know. Again, that was just a really brief, very quick the types of calls we're seeing, the projects that the stormwater division is really trying to prioritize. Right now we have a and Trish Paxton and Andrew Shore have created a great app for us to use in stormwater and Works in Engineering to track and make comments. Map watershed is, is a great got to demo it right before the meeting and I'm very excited about it, but it's really going to help us to prioritize.
Would be with stormwater fee changes that we're talking about. I'm assuming we have a ization list.
Yeah, and that could do some of those drainage studies to identify the NFA's and, you know, these are, these are possible to deviate or, you know, maybe these are properties that are recommended. Generate have money to do some, to implement some of those
issues and that normally was purely a staff-wide during the event. And again, I think the really was what's been really key for Burlington to making sure that people were right and trying to address the issues where we came.
And the flooding that we saw four inches below the rest, which was Cape Fran. So river levels were comparable. Going over Stony Creek Dam, Hurricane Fran. Six inch rain, but it was over a day and a half, two days. Chantal, we had some rain beforehand, but we had, as Amy said, from six to seven, eight in about nine hours. And that's a totally different totally different impacts in the city. And then that was followed up, everything saturated. That Tuesday, we had three inches of rain in less than an hour. Those types of storms, we can't So the the goal is to see how we can minimize those impacts, get more proactive, keep streams clear, keep culverts clear so that
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before use, I don't have any visuals, but we'll just talk through it. Aspects of this project, which I think are really exciting for downtown. So this evening is discussing this item. We'll recommend that it be added to the consent agenda tomorrow night. Tomorrow night's council meeting, if that is your wish. City. Three one South Street. That's become Maple Avenue. It's Vega Street. Is listed there. 7776, Lab four purchased a lot, 2004, 58,000. You'll remember there was a building on that lot at that time. It is no longer there. So I assure you property values downtown on the before council, we're offering this lot with no conditions or deed restrictions, right, Mr. City Attorney?
No deed restrictions. You have agreed to
That key aspect. On that and just kind of talk about what it means and what the, how this joined the city in January, but why does it such a milestone? Point zero acres, site ownership is key. Something like that park, pursuing grant funding, fundraising, how this to happen. And as a step, a discussion point on what this pocket park could be. Space, space, not where you live or work, but it's still community space where you can be together. Really have a defining characteristic of your downtown. It defines how your downtown feels, how you So that's what we see for the future. As a reminder, we have Nothing says is a great starting place. The process has had input from Burlington Downtown Corporation, a design committee that includes So one of and Downtown Corporation recognize and thank the city for offering that $150,000 in matching funds. Us to start those fundraising efforts I was talking about earlier really gets us to, to reality quicker. So open to any questions you might have. You have this.
Good evening. We're going to talk about, done this before, but the key point, I want to just draw your attention to the, last year we applied for state grants that provided us local matches for our electric paratransit vehicles and also provided funds for We're going to 20% So we've done that before. It's good money recovery. The second item to be keenly aware of adopted that plan. The approval of that was us to report and seek federal and state grants to start working on implementation of that plan. This year, we had called state match. The total amount estimated based on the concepts we've talked about in all this review just is about 17.1 million. Transfer hub and the operations and maintenance facility. That's been applied to federal government. Should that come about, and only should that come about, will these funds, just only could about that as we talk. So it's heavily paid for our federal grant, which is about 10%. Should that share with, it's not really a 10% match equal, but it's really a sharing of the local match. It would be 857 each to receive 17. What we're asking the document, I'm expecting about that, that'll be good. Bring this into queue of two requires. We have separate items and then to do that as well and take action on that at your September 16.
So there'll be a public hearing for both?
Yes, sir. 53, so it's urban match. And this will all be due, we have for that September 16. If that's everybody good, that item being put on the agenda for public hearing on September 16.
I do. 13040, 1155 North NC Howard.
Two utility requests. The first is for water. This is for and two Avenue, property, we're kind of hovering here. And the property is down Maple Avenue and to it become an area that the city would like to annex, we can revisit that within that 21-year period. For this to be put on consent agenda for tomorrow. This is for commercial connection. This is on NC but services exist along than our corporate limits. The annexation that we've reported is very specific in terms of the, the east. This is also another one that we are asking to be put on the consent agenda for tomorrow night.
Okay, any questions? Are there five, the city advisory boards and commission office at this time, we will recommend John Kern on our public information.
Hope you all can include them as much as possible. I don't know how you'd like to approach it. If you'd like to start with any particular one first and then there, I'm ready to assist. Is there one that you'd like to start with first or just start at the very top?
If you'll listen off these.
There are some kind of library commission. There's one that is term that will expire next year and then
Dead library.
I would say Sarah Blanton and James Shover. He said one of them ends next year and then one of them is two years. So I don't have preference on time.
Okay, that Blanton I had, too good with that. What about, so we, obviously there's more on this list than there was in April, the first And that one time we talked about And one of the names that we talked about for the library was David Johnson. Due to what? David Johnson on that.
The preference words, the 20 On to the word adjustments.
You got three basements. And but we need one for the regular I'm, I'm bringing up an old list.
What do you see a buy for?
I think he's just for a regular Right, he's, he's for a regular. If you go back to the
Yeah, he's, he's
I'm going from memory, he's like an engineer. So, so based on, based on that, unless they recruit anybody else involved in
Does he point it there for temperature?
TJ is, and that's the one that's been
We did a mailing last year for it in TJ and we got nothing back. It's, concept explained. The county has to appoint the seat initially. So once, once you guys make a reputation, the county does the actual
Okay. Hit to the right click and then the other.
Certainly for the, you've got, I mean, did the problems before? Yes, and that's the full term that expires
I had Ava Smith as a
Yep.
Considerable here, you know, not necessarily how, you know, the You know, the application
That was Ava Smith?
Yep.
Ava Smith is going to take care of that. Expires in 28.
I'm good.
Thoughts about the other? Elizabeth Weisman. Sir Roger, we have Marcia Osley, Roger Moore, and Elizabeth Weisman.
And that was Elizabeth Weisman, Marsha?
I had West, every lot sort of, the product of THC. I can't
And then recreation parks commission and there's one
The application she committed, her daughter actually worked for the city. I'm assuming there's no conflict. I'm assuming rig asset, you know, a huge parks record. Man, I believe, someone can She's again, the city that line two, if you said that my daughter also worked clear on that. We don't discuss any staff or anything like that, any, any It doesn't get discuss that at all. But you don't even get into that. You don't have any control of it anyway, that one. And the other person that I have I'd like to have a little bit of that application. Around the line, just we have really good, like, really good candidates.
My term is the full term?
Anybody else though? And then of course then again two, they serve the
Very wanted.
So next is transit commission.
That's happened pretty seldom. Well, in those and have them about anyway. And there is one
Betty is the full term and the other thing, Andre.
Takes us a tree of appearance where there are, removing the ones who are already appointed. There are two applicants now, David and Steven Lester for one vacant.
And we've looked at the application too. Like I said, I'm just helping to push the names.
Yeah, we'll have And then just to have To, I'd like to see that before.
All right. All right. And that's the public, this is Bob's first making as assistant city manager, and we're excited for Bob and him technical. And it's not a, not. Just excited that Bob was the technical and the experience and knowledge and bricks to be thankful and more blessed, so we do thank him. North Church Street Study Area, as council's where we set money aside to look at planning for North Church Street. Between North Church, Bottom Road, and Grand Pope, the study will focus potential for redevelopment, reinvestment, and revitalization of property from the. Can a public informational meeting and a public input meeting scheduled. Be set for eight p.m. at. And I. Bottom. From three thirty mission and swearing in, which will be this Friday at three P.M. in council chamber. And that's all I have. Congratulations, Bob. If we. Request that we go to closed session to discuss city manager's position, is there going to be a motion? Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the city council go to closed session at this time pursuant to. We have a motion, is your second? We have a motion. Okay, this time we'll close session. Do you like, how long you're going to be in closed session, do you like to take? What's the place of council? Whatever. I think he would love to say.
Yeah.
That could still.
I'm back. Yeah, so. A motion to go back into open session. So move. We have a motion and a second. I'll never signal that back. Any post? Kent, we are.